...to address the city council and what your issues are. I wanted to welcome Sergeant Robert Jackson. David had training in Bowling Green. And I guess Brandon as well?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And it's good to have Sergeant Jackson with us. I just want to make a note or two before we start. While I've got everybody's attention. This Friday night is the last night for the East Main Street Market. And that's going to be in conjunction with the Scare on the Square. Activities will be beginning at 4:30. And the Scare on the Square has been a very successful event and they've moved that to East Main. And I appreciate them doing that. And that starts at 4:30. And we have food vendors, a lot of things going on. If you've not, to those especially on our YouTube video. If you not made it to the East Main Street, the West Cook Band.
Mayor, I hate to interrupt you, but this ain't broadcasting. Can you give me just a minute to go fix it?
Just a minute.
I always make sure it's broadcast.
Well, I've wasted all that talk. Let's just give Lori just a second. Karen, how you and Terry doing? I'm doing good. So you made it back from Florida? Well, we did. We did too. You think we're ready to start?
I think we're good. It was showing that it was working when I went in there and changed stuff.
Well, I just wanted to welcome everybody, especially our YouTube viewers. And I'm sorry for the mess up. And I think we've got it going now. If not, we'll post it later on a recording. And I said, I welcome Sergeant Robert Jackson with us. He's here in the absence of the chief and the assistant chief as well. And so, welcome. I'm encouraging the community. This Friday night will be the last East Main Street Market program. We've got a group coming from Nashville called the West Cook Band. And prior to that, at 4:30, the Scare on the Square will be. And Scare on the Square, I think we didn't have that last year, was it Lori? But now, that's really been a successful program. And we have moved that to East Main. And I want people to come out and take advantage of that. We've got some changes coming up for next year on the East Main Street program. That we're going to move it to a Saturday night because so many activities are happening on Friday night that were conflicting with other activities. So the plan is now to go to the second Friday night of the month, starting next season, on the East Main Market program. And we hope we get it bigger, bigger and better. Before we start or get into our agenda, I do want to recognize. This is actually, Wes Shaw turned us in for Project of the Year for the American Public Works Association. So Friday, Lori and a number of employees went over to Bowling Green to accept this award on the behalf of the city for this project, for the City Hall project. And it was their number one, number one award this year. So it recognized architects, the builders, and the community leaders that was responsible for this. And the man that awarded it to us, had done the speaking over there, was John Albert Brucey's nephew, Robert Brucey's son. I didn't, but anyway, it was a good trip for us. Marge is out sick. And you have in your agenda, the approval, your minutes. I ask that if you had an opportunity to look at those, to look over them, if there's any corrections or additions, that would be the time to do it. Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes that's presented to us. Clayton and Moon, all in favor? And Lori tells me there's an issue or two that doesn't change the outcome of the total. But she might, said we might want to consider putting it off to the next meeting. And then Lori, what's the issue?
It looks like when they did the bill last, some of the vendors are shifted and not with the right descriptions. Like you said, it doesn't change the outcome. It doesn't change the bottom line, so I'll leave it up to them. But I can get Christie to fix this tomorrow and we can resend it out. If I had more time, I could go in there and fix it, but.
Well, there's no need to do that. It's not going to change anyway.
No, it's not going to change the bottom line. It's just going to, it's just going to shift to where the vendor is across from the correct description.
Do I hear a motion approved?
I make a motion to accept them with the shift of the vendors.
That'd be fine.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor? Okay, and she can give us a corrected copy later on. Okay, now we're for our, with our visitors. And who's going to be speaking on the behalf of this group here? Shane? Well, come up to the microphone, please. And tell us who you are and what you're doing and, right here, yeah, okay.
I'm Katie Stacks, the class president of 2022.
I'm Kennedy Davis and I'm the reporter.
I'm Ellie Evans and I'm the vice president.
I'm Haley House and I'm the class treasurer.
Okay, seems like y'all are well represented. And who's speaking, Katie?
It's all of us.
Well, speak and all of you tell us what you want.
I wanted to start off by saying thank you guys for your time today. We're going to be showing you what prom would look like on the square this year.
Alright, so first we just want to give some basic information and then we'll go into more individualized topics. So this year's theme is going to be Golden Gala. So we want to have prom on April 23rd from 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And we want to have it on the square with parking and the Sicilian Bank, Head Start, and First Baptist. Each ticket's are going to be about $35 each. And we plan to have vendors and community donations for the food, 10 to 15 chaperones, and we plan to close the square at 4:00 PM. So on the third page, you'll find a picture of Lawrence County, Kentucky. This past May, they did prom on their square and it was a very pretty and spread out and COVID-safe prom. So that's kind of what we were hoping to regulate with our beautiful square and all the lights and everything as well. And then on the next page, you will find out our layout plan for prom. So we would shut down the whole square, but prom would be located just on the right half. And then the red diamonds that you see would be all the chaperones that would control all the entrances and exits to the prom so that we can keep track of who comes in and who comes out so that it's all like safe and everything. The DJ would be located down East Main Street, similar to the East Main Street Market. And then we would have tables throughout the middle, all spread out so it'd be COVID-safe. We would also like to have vendors to come out and like serve food and that kind of thing for prom. So in the green spaces on the sides, we figured we could have, similar to East Main again, have those vendors out there for everybody.
On the next page would be our cleanup plan. Our cleanup would start around 11:10 and take about an hour to two hours to complete. We would have chaperones and volunteers to help us with that process. And we would hope to reopen the square about 1:30. We went back and looked at this and gave us more time so we would clean up better. So that's why it says 12:30. And we would also have trash cans spread out through the whole square to keep up with the trash. So it'd be easier to clean up.
Our COVID preventions include an outside venue, one entry and one exit, and social distancing. Any other COVID preventions would be based off of the CDC guidelines at that moment.
And these are our backup plans. We actually have two, but for both, we would know we can advance if we had to change. So our inside backup plan would be our high school gym. And the outside backup plan would be for a different Saturday on the square or also in our high school parking lot.
So we wanted to know how we can make this work with a partnership through you all. We wanted to know if we could hang more lights, how you all could help get the community involved, if you all could help get more vendors there, like East Market Main. If you all could provide two officers to monitor safety that night, and if you all had any suggestions about trash disposal. Any city suggestions are welcome. We hope to make this the start of a new Grayson County tradition. Thank you all for your time.
The picture that you furnished us from Lawrence County looks similar to the street that we're using on the East Main Street already. And you know that Scare on the Square is moving its event to East Main Street as well. East Main Street is a street that we can close without consent at the Highway Department. Every other street that comes off the courthouse and the courthouse, and the court, the traffic around the courthouse, we have to have consent from the Highway Department. And we have, when a tractor trailer comes through or around our square and it's closed off, it really creates a hard time for them. And these few hours, we might work with that. But I said, the venue on East Main does not create any disruption at all. So we use the Sicilian Bank parking lot. We've also used the First Baptist Church parking facilities. And even that, we've got additional electricity that we put on the Jack Thomas House for the stage. We have additional electricity where the food truck is. And so vendors can have electricity if they need it. It's up to, I'm going to leave it up to the council and what they think. I would love to see it held on at East Main.
The background, the background of the square is more appealing than the background of East Main Street. I mean, the buildings, the.
The city doesn't actually have anything to do with getting the square shut down though, right? That's, that's a state decision?
Well, generally, we make the permit.
Gotcha.
And we make the permit and.
Do we make the permit or do we have to go through Judge Henderson to make the permit?
No, the city's been making those, haven't they?
We, we write a letter to request.
I understand. Is that a process like 30-day? I mean, I mean, is it an email or is it?
No, it's a physical letter. Yeah, and I would do an alternative date at the same submission because sometimes we had a rain, we had a rain date on the, on the Christmas parade or something.
I think it was the Christmas parade.
And we did not make an alternative date. So by the time we submitted for alternatives closing, it was too late. So I would submit the both dates at the same time. And I said, at that time of day, that would probably be too bad. So Moon, what do you think?
I'd like to try to help them out if that's what they want.
Okay, Clayton?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm making a motion right now that we accept this.
Ms. Tootie, you got any comment?
I'd like to help them out too. I would like to see it go to East Main Street instead of West.
Yeah, instead of courthouse.
I mean, yeah, East Main instead of courthouse here. But, but whenever you close down that side of courthouse, you're actually closing off the whole courthouse.
You are.
You're not closing half of it, you're closing all of it.
And I think one reason for developing the East Main Street was that it doesn't disrupt at all. And like I said, we put facilities down there as well.
But I can see their point is having more room to put all of their tables and stuff would be by the square. You've got a whole lot bigger area there than you do just down the street.
How many is graduating? Well, that's a lot. Jessica, you got any comment?
I think it's a great idea. I can see why you would want to close down the square as well. The background's prettier and it's on a Saturday night from 8:00 to 11:00. So your traffic as far as, you know, trailers and that kind of thing are probably not going to be as bad as if it was during the day.
Not as bad. Billy?
It might speed up the appearance of the hotel.
Yeah.
In the front of it anyway. Good job, girls. I'm on board. If you think you, we can, I mean, we'll do what we do to get the road shut down. I understand, you know, the background and all of it going on. So I think that it's a good deal. We are trying to locate more on East Main Street, but I think that's an exception and I think y'all can make it look beautiful when you get done with it.
Clayton's made a motion. Do I hear second?
I have one question. I have a question before y'all vote. When you all say you're going to close at 4:00, is that close at 4:00 the day of prom? Or is that the night before?
The day, the day of prom.
Will you all have enough time to set up?
Well, if we have a planning, I mean, enough all of years, and I mean, there's going to be 10 to 15 chaperones plus some of the students who aren't in it since prom, I think that would be enough.
I think you'll have a lot more parent involvement with setting up. And it's new, it's going to be cool, it's, I mean, it's.
We also have a prom committee.
Sure.
And we definitely have a lot of people involved in it.
So before we vote on this, are we going to, we need to talk about the other things that they're asking, not just to get the road shut down, but talking about hanging more lights.
And those lights come off the courthouse. The only lights that we've got up is those down East Main Street. But those that come off the courthouse, Craig Lawson hangs those up. And.
So as far as the ones coming off the courthouse, that would be something you all would have to talk to the county about. But my suggestion would be to kind of get an idea of a design that you all think would look good. Like how many more lights you need on East Main, how many more lights you need around the courthouse, and then bring that back to, is that what you all think, to know kind of what they're thinking?
Well, it costs money to put on a graduation, no doubt. And we'll make our facilities, what facilities we have, we'll make them available to you. Is the best I can say. I don't, I don't, we're not in a position to donate money, our money for the expenditures. But like I said, the county would be glad to increase the lighting as well.
What about the officers and trash disposal?
That'd be no problem.
Earlene had a good idea on the officers.
What don't we say if we can provide an officer and then the county provide an officer?
Well, that would be good too.
And then that way it'll be split between the two.
Yeah.
And Robert, Norman has several, several special deputies.
Right, that's not going to be an issue.
Not going to be an issue. Yeah, and if y'all pick the trash up, have it in barrels contained.
That's what she's asking, if we can provide any kind of barrels or any kind of disposal?
We got them, don't we, Wes? Yeah, we can do that.
What about the bathrooms?
Well, they probably will have to get some porta-potties.
You can use the courthouse.
Probably the courthouse.
Yeah, the courthouse, that's right too.
Well, and you know, there may be, once you guys, if this is what you end up doing, there may be some businesses that end up staying open that evening, like the storehouse coffee and things like that, and they have restrooms as well, so.
And that's right too.
I'm sure, I'm sure they'll want to stay open for you all, I mean, for.
That's not going to be a conflict with any day. And I said, we're moving to Saturday night, the second Saturday night of the month when we, next year's East Main Street program. What else? Any other questions? I think Clayton's made a motion, Moon seconded it, all in favor?
Can I clarify that, Mayor? So our motion is going to be to allow them to shut down the courthouse, one officer and a trash bins, correct?
Yes, and for us to request the closing of that for that date. I think that's a big thing.
Do you have an alternative date?
An alternative date, yeah, get us an alternative.
I would, I would get one, so.
And as far as getting the community involved, if you all have ideas or things that you need done, I think if you reach out to any of us, we'll do what we can to help get the word out.
As I said, if you're going to use an alternative, Plan B to go inside or something like that, you wouldn't need an alternative date. But I would think about that, and like I said, we've run into that before.
Do you know what you usually have turnout, you ask for prom? I mean, a couple hundred? I think this will be a new experience and it'll draw more. I think kids will be more excited. I think that it gives them a grown-up feel. I mean, you get out here in real world, so.
Okay, well, all in favor? Okay, ladies, thank you very much. Congratulations on the graduation.
Thank you, Shane.
Any other visitors want to comment? Pudgy, did you want to say anything? Karen, Terry? Okay, next on the agenda would be approval for Mayor Embry to execute the contract with Grayson County School Board of Education for school resource officers. This is a contract that we, that we, it's an ongoing contract that we have with the school for them to reimburse us for the use of our school resource officer.
And we've verified that the amount, I think it's on the second page, Section B, that $64,000 is what the school reimb, or the board reimburses us. So it looked like, David read through it all and it looked like everything was alright. And so Bree and I verified that the numbers were correct in it.
And I also read over it, I believe, last week, so.
It's similar to what we've been doing.
It's, it's very similar to the contract that was signed the year previous. And it's by statute, we have to do an ongoing contract.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
Second? All in favor? Okay. While I was out of town, there was a proclamation made by the judge executive and the mayors of Clarkson and Kentville. And when I came back to Litchfield, I signed it on, on manufacturing week proclamation. And we do this every year. And you got a copy of that in your packet as well. And it just talks about the benefits of having a strong manufacturing base in Grayson County. Do we need to make a motion to that, Lori?
Yes, because we'll have to put it in our resolution.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, good job. Okay, we're moving down to, we still not heard back from Kentucky League of Cities on strategic planning. Lori and I attended about a two-hour conference today on spending the money. What money is that, Earlene?
The ARCA funds, yes.
ARCA's money. And it was long and they were answering questions to which they had been asked through the process.
So I just screenshotted the questions that everybody asked.
Yeah, she's give you a copy of that.
That's what I handed out.
And it really answers a lot of questions about, about that. So read over that and you'll be much more, much more knowledgeable about that money, ARC money when you, when you do.
It does appear that the city, there is going to be some funds that the city can use. I don't think I've told Tammy this yet, but one of the things we did ask about was like the pavilions. Since we have more people utilizing the pavilions, I know Tammy and I have talked in the past, you know, maybe they're not big enough or they need repairs. But we can justify that with the abnormal use of them with the pandemic since people are using them more. So that's one thing, I mean, that's just going to be a drop in the bucket to the money we get. But that may be one thing that Tammy wants to start looking at is ways that we might be able to update the pavilions that are being used.
So read through that. Okay, we're back now on code enforcement. And I think tonight, we're actually going to, Earlene's actually going to read us some of that. And I was reading through my Kentucky League of City magazine this last quarter. And I talked to a fellow in Henderson this week and he texted me about it. Code enforcement's been in place in Henderson since 2017. The city and Habitat has tore down homes and rebuilt homes on about 50 different properties. And of course Henderson's a little bit larger than us, but not too terribly larger than us. And I was at a property today that was good candidates for tearing down. A Tootie had told me about some weeks ago across the railroad track off Salt River Road. And they have cleared all, where Hate and Hack lived. And all that's been cleared, somebody's bought that and cleared that. And we are making slow, slow progress. So Earlene won't have to read all of this, but she can read a summary. And that's what she's going to read tonight.
Yes, Your Honor, Mayor, this is, this, I always want to call you a judge. Moving you up the ladder. This, it would be a first reading, but I'm city attorney, I can't sponsor anything. So I will have to have a council member actually sponsor.
Okay, do you want that now?
Yes.
Or after you read that?
I'll sponsor.
All right, and like the mayor said, the actual ordinance itself, I passed out some drafts of it prior. The last draft I've handed out is pretty much the same ordinance that you have the 19-page copy of. KRS allows me to do a summary, so I'm going to be doing that tonight. It's going to save us probably about an hour. I'll start on here. All right, "Summary of an Ordinance of the City of Litchfield Establishing a Code Enforcement Board. Whereas it is the intent of KRS 65.8801 to 65.8839 to protect, promote, and improve the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens residing within the city by authorizing the creation of an administrative board with the authority to issue remedial orders and impose fines in order to provide an equitable, expedient, effective, and inexpensive method of ensuring compliance with the ordinances enforced within the city. And whereas it is the desire of the City Council of the City of Litchfield, Kentucky to utilize the authority granted in KRS 65.8801 to 65.8839 by creating a City of Litchfield Code Enforcement Board. Whereas under KRS 83A.0604, the reading of an ordinance may be satisfied by stating the title and reading a summary rather than the full text. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Litchfield, as follows a summary of an ordinance establishing a code enforcement board. There is hereby created within the city pursuant to KRS 65.8801 to KRS 65.8839 a code enforcement board which shall be composed of three members. The code enforcement board shall have the power to issue remedial orders and impose civil fines as a method of enforcing city ordinances when a violation of the ordinance has been classified as a civil offense. Regular meetings of the code enforcement board shall be held quarterly and shall be held during the second Tuesdays of the months of March, June, September, and December at 5:00 PM. Violations of ordinances that are enforced by the city code enforcement board shall be subject to the following schedule of civil fines." be subject to the following schedule of civil fines. If a citation for a violation of an ordinance is not contested by the person charged with a violation, the penalties set forth in this subsection shall apply. Violation of animal nuisances, twenty-five dollars, first offense, second offense, fifty dollars, all others a hundred. Building and construction, first offense one hundred, second offense one twenty-five, all others one fifty. Garbage, first offense ten dollars, second offense twenty-five, all others fifty. Occupational license, garbage ten, second offense twenty-five, all others fifty. Occupational license fifty for first offense seventy-five, second offense, all others a hundred. Weeds, first offense ten, second offense twenty-five, all others fifty dollars, so this includes the International Property Maintenance Code. If the citation is contested and a hearing before the code enforcement board is required, the following maximal penalty shall be imposed at the discretion of the code enforcement board. Violation of animals, first offense a hundred, second offense two hundred, all others three hundred. Building and construction, five hundred, first offense seven fifty, second offense, all others a thousand. Garbage, seventy-five first, second offense a hundred and fifty, all others two fifty. Occupational license, five hundred, first offense, second offense seven fifty, all others a thousand. Weeds, fifty dollars, first offense seventy-five dollars, second offense, all others a hundred. And this includes the International Property Maintenance Code. The city of Litchfield, Kentucky hereby adopts, enacts, and incorporates by reference as fully set forth herein in their entirety the following sections of the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code herein after, for purposes of this section referred to as the 2021 Code, as published by the International Code Council Incorporated, as saying may be amended from time to time hereafter. Section 101, scope and general requirements, Section 102, applicability, Section 105, duties and powers of the code official, Section 106, approval, Section 111, unsafe structures and equipment, Section 112, emergency measures, Section 113, demolition, Section 201, definitions, Section 202, general definitions, Section 301, general, Section 302, exterior property areas, Section 303, swimming pools, spas, and hot tubs, Section 304, exterior structure, Section 305, interior structure, Section 306, component severability, Section 307, handrails and guardrails, Section 309, pest elimination, Section 401, general, Section 402, light, Section 403, ventilation, Section 404, occupancy limitations, Section 501, general, Section 502, required facilities, Section 503, toilet rooms, Section 504, plumbing systems and fixtures, Section 505, water system, Section 506, sanitary drainage systems, Section 507, storm drainage, Section 601, general, Section 602, heating facilities, Section 603, mechanical equipment, Section 604, electrical facilities, Section 605, electrical equipment, Section 606, elevators, escalators, and dumbwaders, Section 607, duct systems, Section 701, general, Section 709, means of egress, Section 703, fire resistance ratings, Section 704, fire protection systems, Section 705, carbon monoxide alarms and detection, Appendix A, boarding standard. Violations of the provision of these sections above shall be deemed a nuisance enforceable by any and all provisions of this ordinance. The code enforcement officer and code enforcement board shall have justification over and shall enforce this code and all other ordinances adopted or amended which specifically provide for the enforcement by the code enforcement officers or board in the matter set forth herein.
Earlene, thank you. Will you have to read, can you read the summary at the next meeting?
I can, we can, we can either do a special call meeting or not, or I can just do it at the next meeting, whichever you prefer. I do, again, I'd mentioned it before, I do plan on having the members here.
They need to be here.
And Tyler, I'll also have him here, and we'll go ahead and swear them in at the second reading.
If you can read the summary, we'll just do it at the next regular meeting.
Okay.
Moon, what else is there?
Moon.
Lori, did you have? I was going to, they're having a discussion, was there anything else?
No, I was just asking Earlene, once we do that second reading, there's several ordinances that are going to have to be amended, so she's going to have more than just the code enforcement.
Oh, you think we ought to have a special?
I don't know, that's what I was just asking her, how many?
It's up to you, if you want to do one.
Why don't we make it?
Bring it on.
Okay.
That's what we're here for.
And the reason I wanted to space those out, I wanted to make sure to do my second reading first of those, and then, I don't want to amend a bunch of ordinances if it don't pass, so.
Since it's new, I would, I'd read it all.
Make it, make it five o'clock, at five o'clock the next council meeting night, and we'll just get here an hour early.
Can you do that, Earlene?
I think as long as we publish it, we can.
Well, it'll be a special call meeting, since we change.
And we'll run it right into the regular meeting.
We can do that.
Yeah.
So, we'll do a special call meeting on next regular day at five o'clock.
Just move it up an hour.
Yeah. And we'll invite, now, did you put the alternate in this reading?
Yes, you all had talked about wanting two alternates instead of just one, and so what I did in the, the law, the actual ordinance itself that will be, you know, published with our, that will be on record here, includes that we have to have a minimum of one alternate, however, we have the option of up to two.
Okay, well, that's good.
So, you all had wanted that, so I made sure to work it in there.
And that's on the page, bottom of page three, Section D there.
Okay, that's good. Moon, you got any questions or anything about this? Clayton?
Not about the code.
Okay.
No, sir.
Jessica?
No.
Billy?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll look forward to that then, and we're planning on our next regular meeting, meeting here an hour early for that.
Yeah.
Okay, Wes Shaw, do you have anything you want to bring before the city council?
Yeah, just going to let everybody know that we are trying to start ditching through some of the community, so as soon as we get, just bear with us, we're trying to get in each neighborhood and try to get some of the tiles cleaned out, maybe to help with some of the flooding, but about every spot in the community needs it, so as soon as we can get to it, we'll be moving around into certain areas.
We've had some torrential rains that...
Yes, we've had a lot of rain.
We've had a lot. Sergeant Jackson, do you have anything to name for us?
No, sir, not at this time.
Thank you. Earlene?
No, I don't think so.
Earlene's here on Thursday mornings, and if you want to talk, legal talk, we've been in a lawyer's office all week, it seems like, and so it's good to have that behind us.
Something I was going to mention, it falls in the police department, I asked Officer Jackson, they are going to have the drive-through trick-or-treating.
That's right.
And I think that's a great service they provide to the community, so I saw lots of.
Now, watch the time on that.
That's going to take place on October the thirtieth, from five to eight is my understanding of it, it could be later, it could be from five thirty to eight thirty.
Yeah.
They will have drive-through lanes using distancing, safety issues there, so.
Then, not going to have Safe Spot?
No, sir, that's my understanding.
And now, people in the community, if they want to trick-or-tree, turn your light on and open your door, if you don't, turn your light off, and that same way with your children, you want them to participate, bring them down, and take them to the neighborhoods that's got a lot of candy in it, like Cane Mill Hikes Court and stuff like that.
I think all the car clubs have joined together to, on the square, Saturday night, the thirtieth, and let the kids walk the sidewalks, be a safety deal.
We have pretty weather.
So, there'll be several nice cars, and hopefully be good weather to, I think that's kind of how the Safe Spot got started anyway, back years ago, was a bunch of, a bunch of guys in old cars went to the fairgrounds and set up one time, and then it turned into Safe Spot several years later, so.
Well, it's busy.
Going back to the roots.
It's a hoot out there. Lori, did you have any comment?
I'll just elaborate on what Jackson was saying about the, the drive-through here, if I'm not mistaken, just so if there's anybody listening, I think she probably told me they'll enter through the back.
That's correct, yes.
That way they're not.
Come off of Tenton Street?
Yes.
To the rear entrance?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else, Lori?
Nope.
Tammy?
We started Christmas in the park, so if there's any businesses that would like to participate, please reach out to Parks and Rec. Christmas on the square is coming along quite nicely, we, the mayor had last year wanted us to see if we could paint the windows on the square, I contacted the high school, the art department there is willing to volunteer their time to do a community service, and right now we have twelve businesses on the square that are going to be willing to let us paint their windows for the holidays. The Christmas on the square is on the fourth, at this time, we have seventeen vendors, so I think that is quite successful for our first-time program. And we just had a really large tournament this past weekend, and I just wanted to give a good shout-out to Jody, I don't know if you guys have ever been out there to any of those tournaments, Jody puts a lot of work into it, and I think we're very fortunate to have him. We were able, with Wes's help, and Shai and Aaron, and the vocational school, were able to fix the Veteran Memorial flag, so that is up, and the vocational school did make us a spare part, so if we ever have the issue again, it won't take us as long, we could just change it out, and they can fix the other one. And the vocational school is also helping me with Christmas in the park, fixing some of the displays that they have made in the past, and just updating them. Disc golf, once again, Wes has been really helpful on that, he, we got all the baskets up, they just now have to have concrete poured in it, and I'll also give another shout-out to Wes, he's really helped me out with this grant, clearing out the path for bidders to get into there, and I think he went above and beyond in helping me in that, God knows, we don't want me up there clearing the woods, but I appreciate that a whole lot, and the bid, it will, and I believe I said on the twentieth, I think is what it is.
I think that's what you told me.
The twentieth will open bids.
Now, when's the Christmas parade?
It is that morning, the fourth, that morning.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, and it'll be the Grinch, or the Whoville, I guess.
Well, how it'll fit in well, shouldn't it?
But, that's all I have.
I'll second that thank you on the disc golf to all of you all involved, because there's been a lot of people say to me how excited they are about that and how it's going.
It's been a long time coming, JT and Dustin have both reached out to me, and, you know, our understanding was supposed to go up on the upper part of the trail, but JT had a vision, and he brought it to me, and he asked if he could set up temporary, so he could at least do a tournament of some sort, just to see how it went, and I contacted him the Monday after and asked him how everything went, and he said it went rather well, there was only one little incident, and they rerouted the basket, so just one child got hit with the frisbee, and it was because somebody went a little AWOL with it, but they modified it, so it'll justify, and I think where it's at, it's, it's going to be really successful.
But this trail's running a year behind.
Yes, it is.
I actually spoke to it, been done last year.
And I hated that I had to put everything off until then, but we couldn't justify losing that money to making any operations to that property at all.
No, no, it's a substantial amount of money.
So, JT was very understanding, and I think he's really happy with where it's at now, because we can do some modifications for more experienced tournaments, so simple moves of poles or baskets and stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Pudgy, do you want to say anything?
No, just what we talked about earlier, State Police want to use the tower up, it's supposed to be marketed, and should have been done more early.
Well, like I said, when it does get done, Tony's supposed to keep me informed as well, and we'll get those utility members over there and look at that.
They walked all over, I couldn't find any aim, so I guess.
I couldn't either, I went over there the other day. What's, Pudgy's talking about, the Kentucky State Police is wanting to put a tall antenna tire at the water, near the water tank on Sunbing Road, because it's one of the highest places in Litchfield, and it would give them lots of coverage, plus we'd be able to take our antennas that we have, that's on that water tire, and mount them on the new KSP tire, and they're also going to build a building to house their equipment, and then we'll house ours as well. And the city council actually had to be the ones to approve it, but we will on the recommendation on the utilities commission that meets this Thursday night, so maybe by our next meeting, we'll be bringing that recommendation to the city council. Thank you, Pudgy. Ruby, did you have any comment? You sure? Karen? Terry? Matt? Moon?
I'm good.
You sure?
Sure.
Clayton?
I've got two things, on Decker Lane, above the church there, where Babel Drive comes down into there, I've got pictures of it, it's, there was a couple of people that come out of that church, and they come out the back way, and they bottomed out and tore the bottom end out of their vehicle, there's a great big V, just like that dugout in the, I don't know, garbage truck or what has done it, but there's a great big V, it's where the two properties join, but out in the blacktop, and it's about like fifteen, twenty feet long and real deep, and I'm wondering about getting that.
Down there by, down below City Hall?
Yeah, yeah, there, they're up from Clearview, next to Clearview. And then also, we were talking about the rain, and I'm thankful that you're going to be doing that, but in all that rain, we were out the other day and got a couple of calls from the people that are on Broom Field, and I went over there, and two or, two or three things are wrong there, where the fairgrounds is, the rock is being washed out of the fairground, and they were coming down into the road and then on to these people's property, and the ditch behind their property that's always held that water, the tile's actually not big enough, running back there behind Teddy's.
Ted Stevens.
Yeah, right behind Teddy's, and running down then and the one under the road, but when we went down and looked at it, in forty-four years, it's the first time Teddy has had water up to his house building.
He showed me a picture of it.
Frankie Harney has had, never had it come into his house, and it's come into his house this time, and he's been there thirty-some years, and so the ditch isn't but about, isn't but about that tall, it is when it first comes off of Broom Field down behind Frankie, it is, but we went and we looked at that problem, Wes, and I don't know, it, it's going to take something big to fix that property.
Probably, the worst part about it is, of course, we work on the right-of-way, what goes into half their houses and stuff is actually on that property, so from the right-of-way on, it's basically going to be their responsibility.
I think you got a problem on down the creek.
On down below the tile?
Yes, down, way down, if you walk that creek, you'll see why.
And that's where it calls back to where, you know, on the right-of-way, we can do what we can, but as far as getting on down the creek and cleaning the creek out, that's on private property.
Yeah, I think the creek's stocked up a little more than what it used to be down the creek.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure, over the years, it's just hard, we can't actually get on the property to do anything about it.
So, well, over there on Sycamore, behind those apartments, they've got, they've got concrete.
They've got concrete ditch running out?
Right. Now, can we do that for that neighborhood out there? Do the same thing?
As long as it's on the right-of-way, we can, if it's on private property, we can.
I mean, it's where two properties come together, right there, and then goes into that big culvert down there and runs under that guy's house, and then back out to the big tile that crosses Camille Road, as Billy was talking about.
Yeah.
But, when it comes, it comes off the fairgrounds, it's, I mean, it was pathetic, it was this high coming off the fairgrounds down Broom Field.
I've been out there.
And it was flooding out all back in there, and it's, it's really been a mess for a long time, but it's got a lot worse, and trying to figure out some way to do, if you come off the fairgrounds there on Broom Field and you come down, there's a sewer thing back in there somewhere, and they're afraid also, if it gets to that, that it's, it'll flood that out and come back into their homes.
Yeah.
So, in doing that, we'd have to be careful, but then, also coming in behind them, you know, this, this has been such a bad thing, been going on for a long time, that we need to research something to really help them keep that from ever happening again, and I know that's, part of it's on their property, but it looks like that that's on the property, the property owner over there on Broom Field, I mean, over there on Sycamore, too.
Yeah, they, on Sycamore, they actually, when they put them apartments in, they poured that concrete ditch on around, if you notice, it comes out right there on Sycamore.
We didn't do that, we didn't do that though, did we?
No. Whoever built the apartments did.
Yeah.
They brought it out to the end of those apartments where it turns towards Cave Mill, and their concrete stops, which has, gets close to the right-of-way for, we can start at the concrete and go to the ditch, but as far as putting concrete around anywhere else, we didn't do any of that.
Because, see, all that, all that runoff is coming off the fairgrounds, coming down, crossing the road there, and it's bringing rock off of the fairgrounds, mud, I mean, mud was that deep out there, and bringing it down, and bringing it onto their properties, something back there where that fairground is on the backside.
Mm-hmm.
On Broome Field, something needs to be done.
Clayton?
Uh, I agree with you a hundred percent, but now, we had a torrential rain, I think it was that Monday, that before I came back from my trip, that we had four or five inches in just a few hours.
Right.
And...
Well, this is the first time, this is the first time it's come up in Frankie's house, but he's had it almost up to his house all the other times, I mean, this is...
I've been out there, I've been out there and seen that, and...
I had video of it too, and so.
So, we've had water issues out in Kuiper subdivision, I've got a creek behind my house that normally, it's about eighteen inches wide, and it went as much as twenty-foot wide, we'd come up out of the banks, and like I said, it was twenty-foot wide.
Well, aren't there something that we can do coming off that fairgrounds?
Well, part of that tile that comes under the fairground entrance on the backside, part of it is sealed to the end, where it's about half running what it's supposed to.
Right.
And when we get to that area, I mean, we're starting.
They're out there kinda now.
But, we would re-ditch that down through there and get those tiles open, but once it goes under Broome Field and pops out behind Mr. Stevenson's house.
Right.
You know, the rest of that from the right-of-way on around to where it meets on the other side would be between him and the landowner beside of it, to continue to fix that on through.
So, if the fairgrounds fixed, what's happening, how we good with that now?
It's just gonna put more water quicker, once we get it to there, so it's just the years and years of rock and stuff going through those tiles that built it up to where it's higher than the ditch line.
Well, you know, like Billy was talking, walking that creek down there, and that being blocked off some down there, that tile though that goes across Cave Mill Road to the creek, are there any way to put them, aren't there another way we could put a bigger, bigger tile in there that might relieve part of it?
Yeah, I suppose we could, we'd have to cut the road and put a bigger tile inside of it.
How big a tile's down there?
The one that by Sycamore is probably a forty-eight inch, I believe.
So, it's big.
The bigger tile ain't gonna help you if it's choked off down it to, on that creek.
It's just gonna back down to the miller lady that lives on the corner.
Yeah, she had an issue.
Same problem, 'cause that creek is backing up to her place, and we ditched to the edge of the right-of-way, and, you know, from there on down would be between her and the landowner, but we don't have any easements or anything through there.
Oh, there's no easement?
Mm-mm, the property owner, a lot of times the property's meet the creek, but on her situation, I think she's got part of it, and the neighbors got part of it, and, you know, it's getting down, working on theirs all the way down in order to get that cleared out, but it's just, I mean, it's like that in several places in town, that we just, we can go to the edge, and that's about it. I wish we could go on through, but...
Can, can you, can you look at that fairground thing and maybe?
Yeah, it's on my list, when we go up Broome Field, starting at Stevenson's to where they, some of the yards have tiles in them, all the way up, about halfway.
Right.
It, it's on, we're gonna try to ditch both sides all the way up through there, once we get Cave Mill done.
Okay.
So, we got Ashbury and Kuiper, and two or three others to get, so it just takes us a little bit to get around to all of them.
Yeah, I know even out there on Hilltop, when we had that rain, it was, it was, it was running up to my house.
Yeah, we were fortunate, the utility department did loan us a piece of their equipment too, so we had two of our mini excavators going at one time, so I'd be thanking them for loaning some equipment every once in a while.
Okay.
We're trying.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know you are, Wes, I know you are, and appreciate everything you're doing, but those, those people, when they call you, and it's pouring rain, and matter of fact, I thought, I thought I saw one of the city trucks go through.
They, they videoed all of it, took pictures, and it kind of rained, so I've got, know where we're going whenever we go out there.
Well, what would we do that Billy was talking about down in the creek, what, what happens there? Have we got any?
We don't have any, any right to get in the creek.
No.
Well, who does, the prop, uh, where it's between the property owner?
Yes, between the property owners.
You go behind Jerry's house.
Yeah.
You go fishing, don't you?
No, actually.
Terry, you got any comments about that situation? You live right out there?
I was really glad to see that some ditches had been dug along Cave Mill Road, traveling that road numerous times a day, the ditches are in definite need of repair, and the tiles that run under the drives, some of them don't have a clearance of that much anymore, and it's nobody's fault other than just erosion and grasping.
No pinning, leave, it's still...
And I think that probably digging out the ditches as much as you can along both sides, and maybe repairing some of the tiles, will at least allow the water to flow instead of, like, building.
Right.
So, I'm really glad to see that.
Pudgy, did you have a comment?
Yes, it said, the creek you're talking about, has it got water continuously, is it just ditched, or water?
No, it's creek, it runs.
Yeah.
I mean, it runs, yeah, at the end of, what's it, what's the road there before Tony King's, Wes?
Well, it does.
Oak something?
Oak wood.
Oak, oak wood, if you go down to the bottom of it, that's where the creek is, right there where Brandon Sims has it, that's where it comes running through there, and then it goes all the way right over in front of Kevin Ferris there.
Right.
I didn't think that you could own creek, that belongs to the state, that could have all the water, rides, even Red River, no limit, the water, you can't own that, I mean, you can't keep people out of it, they can't, don't cross your property to get to it, but you can go up and down, walk, walk through the water, and the whole water.
It's a core, it's a core thing, Ed, Wes.
Yeah.
It's core, it's rich.
Something about Blue Line's dream.
Yeah, Blue Line, Red Line.
Are there any way to contact the Corps and see if they can go down there and look it over the, down the creek where Billy's talking about, and have them to maybe do something with that? If it is...
We were talking about the Corps today, that I had called them on that property that Steve Tempelman owns, that ditch that comes underneath Railroad and comes all the way down to Mill Street, all that's eroded, and in dire need of repair, and especially there on Steve's property, and I called the Corps, I spoke to them, and he said, what we'll do, he said, we can't do the repair, but he said, we'll bring in engineers and find out what it takes to repair, and he said, nine times out of ten, we can find federal money that will repair it, so, but that's the last we heard from them, and we didn't get anything back. And I said, these, these torrential rains, the law of nature, that water flows to the lowest point, it's, it's hard to change that, and when you buy a house or whatever, like I said, it's behind my house, I had one of my neighbors send me a picture, and said, would you come up and look at this creek behind my house, I said, honey, I just live three houses from you, it's the same behind my house that was behind their house, and these bad rains is just, is bad, and what else you got, Clayton?
Well, one more question, Wes, what would it take, what's your recommendation for those two owners of that property there for them to do?
To, they'd have to clean out the ditch that would match what we've started on one end versus the other, I mean, it'd just be some excavating through there to continue that ditch on.
'Cause that would take quite a bit of...
It's kind of a hard place, the way it goes between their houses and...
That'd take quite a bit of money for them to pour concrete.
Yeah, if you do a concrete ditch, I mean, would be, you know, outrageous, I'm sure.
Okay.
Just a, a regular ditch for the water to travel, 'cause like I said, theirs now is higher than what the actual tile coming under is, so when it gets there, it kinda just builds up, and then, you know, until it...
So, do you think then coming off the fairgrounds, once you ditch that, that that will alleviate part of it?
It will help, but theirs is still gonna, you know, until theirs is lowered and cleaned out enough, it's still gonna back up on, even on the...
Well, when you do do that, will there be a danger of that coming into the sewer and backing up in their houses?
I don't think so.
If that's never happened before?
Yeah, I, I mean, 'cause it's...
What do you think, Pudgy?
We have an anthill cover, and it's not gonna let that much into there at all, sewer is knocked up, it's backed up through the manhole, but it's...
Right, okay. Appreciate you, Wes.
Once we get out there ditching, we've gotta do it in front of Mr. Stevenson's house too.
Right.
In front of his house, and I don't care to talk to them about it, and, you know, try to help figure something else that'll help in that area.
What else you got, Clayton?
No, that, that's it.
Thank you.
I don't have anything there.
Jessica?
I'm good.
You sure?
Mm-hmm.
Billy Dallas?
Good.
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn then.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor? Thank you.